Good morning, members. My name is Colin Stewart. I'm the Chair of the Integration Joint Board, and I'd like to welcome you this morning to this special meeting of the board today, Friday the 27th of October. I'm joined at the top table here by on my right, the clerk to the board, Mr Hendry, by Jackie Pepper, our Chief Officer, by Jackie Jensen, the Vice, new Vice Chair of the Board, and by Evelyn Devine, our Head of Health. This is my first meeting as Chair of the Board, and I'd just like to be able to say thank you to our prior Chair, Bob Benson. I'm very glad that he is staying on the Board, and I'm sure he'll bring a wealth of experience with his, in his capacity also as a non-executive member of NHST side and Chair there of the Public Health Committee. Before we start today, I just wanted to say that obviously the extreme weather events that we've experienced in Perth and Kinross T-Side and indeed across the country in recent weeks have obviously proved challenging for members of the public and for the members of public services, delivering services to our residents. I haven't had an update on Storm Babette, but from, or indeed our current weather situation. But from the event at the start of October, I was delighted to be told by our Chief Officer that with all of the road closures that happened, you know, entire villages being cut off and towns being cut off, the Health and Social Care Partnership managed to complete all but two of its care visits, and those were dealt with by family and neighbours. Those two, achieving all of those care visits in such extreme weather and flooding and communities being cut off is an extraordinary achievement. And I'd like to pay tribute to all of the members, all of the staff of the Health and Social Care Partnership who went above and beyond to make sure that care continued to be delivered. And I think I have to pay a special thank you to Mr Ogilvy, our Head of Adult, Head of Adult Social Work and Social Care, who's been the on-call officer, making sure that all of that happens. So, thank you, Mr Ogilvy. Thank you to all our staff. Councilor McColl.
Thank you, convenor, our Chair, sorry. I would just like to not just endorse that, but also to pay tribute to our partners in the other sector, who I know from my own experience and from constituent experience, their care at home providers went to extraordinary lengths as well, often at their own expense, in order to ensure that the people they supported got at least some support, even if it wasn't the full entitlement. So I think I welcome your comments, and I would like to include that, those organisations in your comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We can now go on with the business of the meeting. Item one is, Clark, if you could confirm any apologies for absence or substitutions?
Thanks, Chair. Good morning, everyone. We have apologies from Lindsay Hunter and also from Sally Peterson. I'm not aware of any other apologies, unless there are any that members want to indicate from the floor or online. No, I think that's all our apologies then.
Thank you. So today's business is a special meeting or a single item meeting, which is to discuss the Perth and Kinross Health and Social Care Partnership Winter Plan for 2024. Are there any declarations of interest in that single item on the agenda today? No, then we will move on to that item. And I'm going to ask, first of all, our Chief Officer to introduce the plan.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I'm very pleased that this report is before the IGB today, because I know it's earlier than it's come before and really pleased that we're having this report in front of you in advance of what we would see as the core winter period, which would be mid-December to February, in order that you have sight of that. The report itself represents a huge amount of work across the Health and Social Care Partnership and our management team and staff to set out the actions that we will take to achieve winter readiness and to ensure resilience throughout the winter months, which includes adverse weather situations, but also the additional impact that winter brings in terms of health conditions and everything that's associated with that. Unlike, this plan can't be devised on its own in isolation. It requires considerable collaboration with our acute colleagues, both locally here in Perth and Kinross and the Perth Royal Infirmary site, but also with our colleagues across T-Side, and to set out a target operating model across the whole system to ensure that the whole system works and flows well in difficult circumstances across winter. So that operating model requires us in Perth and Kinross to maintain the considerable successes that the IGB has already heard in relation to the work that's carried out, been carried out over the last nine months to achieve particular successes in discharge without delay and reducing length of stay in hospital settings and bringing that down to a manageable level. It will require us to maintain that. And unlike previous years, there has been no financial support from Scottish Government to alleviate the additional costs associated with that. So the resource requirements to be able to manage these winter pressures are clearly outlined in this report. And in order for us to deliver the plan, we are identifying the additional costs that are not currently set out in our budget for 2024. I'm going to hand over to Evelyn Devine to talk us through some of the detail on the plan. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Jackie. And thank you, everybody, for giving me the opportunity to present our approach to winter planning this year. So the purpose of the report is to do just that in terms of laying out our approach to winter, but also noting the ongoing winter challenges in respect of planning. So in terms of winter challenges, we have, as Jackie said, we have not received any central funding this year, which has always been an automatic thing that we would get winter pressures funding. That has not been received by Scottish Government. You know, winter challenges go without saying in terms of our demographic and geography in Perth and Kinross. Again, still seeing the increased frailty and complexity of presentations in our elderly population and still dealing with the long-term impact of COVID-19. Set that alongside workforce recruitment retention, ongoing issues that we have in the partnership. So what this report doesn't cover, and I thought it would be useful just to say that, because within the T-Side Plan, we have T-Side approaches to services, as you know, and primary care being one of those. And although we have local commitments in primary care, there is an extract in the T-Side Plan that talks about the commitment for primary care. And that's to work both in hours and out of hours to champion and excel in community-based care through multidisciplinary team working, inclusive and working closely with our district nursing service, pharmacy service, AHP services, social care services and care homes. So there is a commitment in the T-Side Plan in relation to primary care. And the other thing that we don't specifically mention, albeit as part of our plan, is mental health services, because again, the T-Side approach is within the T-Side Plan and committing to refreshing the business continuity plans, additional surge beds, preparing for capacity huddles, discharge coordination, and really looking at out-of-hours coordination at Carthview. So in the context of that, we have made some recommendations for the IGB to consider. So we would like the IGB to note the ongoing capacity and flow pressures in the Health and Social Care System, which are likely to increase leading up and during winter. And we're beginning to see some of that already. We would like the IGB to approve our plan, to note, as Jackie said, the T-Side Winter Plan will be coming to the IGB in November. And we are asking, a specific ask of approving additional non-recurring spend to support some additionality in our medicine for the elderly ward and our early supported discharge project. And we'll go into more detail on that. And also in relation to the recommendations we're looking at, directions set out in Section 6. So in terms of the background to the report, as Jackie said, it sits alongside the other two HSCP partnerships, NHST side and Scottish Ambulance. And we've worked collaboratively towards preparations for winter. And this has been led through the On-Scheduled Care Board at T-Side, who are the lead partners in terms of preparing for winter. The T-Side Plan looks at high-impact changes, of which we in Perth and Kinross have focused down on three of those. So in relation to high-impact changes, we're looking at concentrating on urgent care, which gives us a single point of contact with our advanced nurse practitioners and supporting GP referrals in relation to triaging and preventing admission to hospital and supporting people to remain at home. We're looking at the virtual capacity that has been created by hospital at home with an impact of looking at 10 virtual beds to support Perth City in particular. And the last is optimising flow. Now, this is not new for us. We've been working on optimising flow for the last year. We have maintained an amber and low amber status in relation to that. But we have given a commitment in the T-Side Plan to continue to strive to achieve green. By achieving green, it means that we'd have no more than five people in acute hospital wards in PRI, and we would have 25 people in the whole system waiting or delayed for some purpose. So as we've said, this winter plan is not supported by additional investments. So there is an ask today for us to be able to approach the IGB in terms of supporting additional seven beds in T Ward in medicine for the elderly and the early supported discharge to expand in evidence, which really supports a rapid discharge from PRI from the acute wards and the frailty ward. So in relation to the winter plan itself, we have put in a chart in relation to 2.4, which spells out the demand pressures in relation to our increased demographics. Now, this is not new to our IGB members. I think everybody is getting the real picture about the impact of our aging population. So we have included in the plan the old age dependency ratio, which defines as the number of people aged 65 and over versus the working population. So in 2019, this started 36 adults for our over 65 population to every hundred of people at working age. But by 2023, or 2030, sorry, we're looking at that rising to 50 people over 65 and above per hundred of the working population. So we know this. It's quite significant. It's not changing. We're not seeing a dip in the age of demographics for 65, 75, 85 and over 90. So how do we tackle a winter plan in light of all of this with no additional funding and with the hope and the ask that the IGB will approve what we are asking for? So what are our proposals within the winter plan? So our key aim for this period, therefore, is to support the system and staff in terms of resilience. The focus of the winter plan is to ask for increased capacity in certain areas, but to really ensure that people get the right care at the right time in the right place, so avoiding unnecessary hospital admissions. As our Chair has so rightly said, our focus has been on maintaining and proving connections across all agencies. However, we had planned a tabletop exercise to test our business continuity plans. And as of last week, that became a real scenario for us in terms of managing Storm Babette. And I have to say, as our Chair has said, there's been, there was a fantastic integrated approach to manage in our vulnerable people in our communities. And that was across district nursing, palliative care, care at home, independent care home sector. Everybody went over and beyond and went the extra mile. And I think we were just doing a mop-up session of that now and looking at, you know, what went well, where we could maybe improve. And they're doing that as integrated teams in the localities, and we'll pull that together for our integrated management team and EMT to have a look at that. So again, great preparation for winter for us. So that's good. In our business continuity, over and above that, we are continuing to review our lists of vulnerable people to be ready for winter in terms of support to them. We're taking a locality-wide approach to planned leave, especially during peacology periods, encouraging the uptake of our winter vaccines for our staff and patients, and working with our home safety partners, community wardens and community organisations in preparation and to maximise the support for people over winter in terms of giving them advice on home safety and winter resilience. This work has already commenced in North Perthshire, and we are hoping to move that to South Perthshire as well in Perth City. So in relation to over and above our business continuity plans, we are continuing to focus on integrated care. Now, we have presented around integrated care as part of our older people's programme, and the focus remains on enabling people to be supported at home as long as possible. We are taking a realistic medicine approach to this. So we're looking to maintain our focus, reduce variation, reduce duplication, reduce the levels of assessments that people need to receive, and looking at maintaining single points of contact and coordination of care. So over and above that, we are looking to try and implement a community flow navigation pathway. And that will be looking at all of our services that respond rapidly and trying to join them up and streamline processes around that. So we are ready for that urgent response. We're also looking at integrated end-of-life pathway. Work has already begun on this, and we're just moving that forward. And our advanced care planning, which is encouraging staff to initiate conversations with patients and families and what is important to that person and their future. So this work is all ongoing. And then our third sort of priority is really optimising flow. And this is not a new priority. As I said at the start, we've been working on this over the past 12 months. And we have continued to maintain an amber status for capacity and flow and working towards green. So in relation to that, though, and Donna will keep us right at some stage if you want to ask some finance questions. But we have thrown a lot of, a lot of sort of finance at this in terms of how do we maintain that amber status? So we have had additionality in heart. We have been able to use agency staff. We've had the additional beds in medicine for the elderly. We introduced the early discharge programme, and we've had a pathway for interim placements. So that technically is not sustainable for us moving forward. And as an older people's service, we are seeing the overspend that's caused. So we needed to take some strategic decisions around where would be the best place to focus for the winter. And what we've done in the ask today is we've asked to focus on services that will get people directly home. So the Scottish Government's dictat last year around interim placements, we did use. But ideally, we would like now to use interim placements only for our in-house residential care homes, but not through the independent sector. So we're agreeing to sort of pull back on that and build our services around getting people directly home with less delays. So that's where we're at. However, all of this is really based on the optimisation of our Care at Home Transformation Programme. And we need that to transform at pace in improving efficiencies and streamlining processes. So the paper goes into lots of areas of improvement. I was going to ask Kenny, if possible, to just give us a little bit of a flavour of the things that we've either started or are going to start for Care at Home.
Thanks, Evelyn. Yes, as Evelyn says, we've got our Care at Home Transformation Project ongoing, which we have discussed in our previous meetings. Shorter-term actions that we're taking to increase capacity for this winter include streamlining of referral processes for our internal heart rehabilitation service and also for care at home services, looking at increasing the efficiency of heart through automated scheduling. And that will reduce travel time and increase direct contact time. The automated scheduling is actually in place. There are a few teething problems at the moment, but we're hoping that the impact of that will be realised in the next few weeks. Also looking at the planned implementation of Pinpoint, which is another IT system, which will plot care and unmet need geographically in a live system. And that will enable resources across our internal and external services to be targeted more efficiently and thus increase capacity. We are reviewing our Living Well team and transferring that resource to focus on delivering care at home support for people returning home from Cleef and Blair Gowrie Community Hospitals. We've also got our early discharge project Run My Avenue, which has been previously mentioned, has now been extended till the end of the financial year, and it's got increased capacity of an extra 250 hours per week. We are working closely with our colleagues in the independent sector to try and increase capacity there. And one particular example is the extension of a provider who's previously provided support in the north locality into the south locality. They have managed to increase their recruitment fairly significantly. So they're now taking on a number of runs in the south locality. And again, we are looking at domestic and international recruitment for our internal services. We currently have a domestic recruitment drive underway. That's including advertising on bus stops, petrol pumps, use of social media, et cetera. So hopefully, people will be seeing lots of adverts for that to increase our capacity. And as, again, as previously discussed, we are part of the Scottish Government pilot for international recruitment. That's ongoing, and we're expecting the first cohort to be recruited and in place by December of this year.
Thanks, Kenny. So over and above that in our optimising flow work stream, we have been supporting our acute colleagues in relation to setting up an ambulatory care area in PRI. And so that is with the ability to assess, to admit rather than admit to assess. So it means that people will come into a day case area, will be assessed, diagnosed, and will, if clinically fit, be discharged on the same day. And from a HSCP perspective, we can support that through into the community. So that, we are hoping, will make a huge difference to the numbers that are admitted into our acute wards from primary care. Over and above that, just a few areas that we are putting forward as well, which is our seven-day discharge hub service. So we tested that last weekend. It was quite successful. And we are going to continue that now on through the winter. So that's really good. In relation to our final priority, that is that of urgent care. And we've been working and building urgent care now for the last 18 months. It has been challenging because recruitment has been challenging. However, our hospital at home service is now up and running and operating in Perth City and is looking to be fully operational by 2024. Our advanced nurse practitioner, single-point triage, has also been up and running for a significant level of time. And that can see anything from 20 to 40 patients referred from GP practice and triaged. And they will either be seen by the advanced nurse practitioner or referred into our locality integrated teams, where, you know, if it's somebody that's fallen, we might send a physiotherapist to assess. Or, you know, if it's a mental health issue, we would send one of our mental health, older people's mental health teams to assess. So really trying to cut down on duplication, repeated assessments and getting the right care at the right time. So in relation to our engagement with stakeholders, we continue to work with NHST side and Perth and Kinross Council to look at our messaging around winter planning and just being able to signpost people to those messages. In relation to our staff, we continue to work to remind staff of the importance of kindness, respect, understanding, while supporting them to maintain their own wellbeing and resilience. We have had a huge investment in our staff wellbeing and culture change in terms of the investment in What Matters To You events. And we now have over 120 staff signed up as What Matters To You ambassadors. We are encouraging our staff to uptake the COVID and flu vaccine. And we have ensured that our community staff have the appropriate and warm safe uniforms and warm jackets. So in relation to financial implications, and I know there may be questions around this, which Donna can pick up afterwards. But it's just to say, in the absence of the Scottish Government funding for 2023, we in Perth and Kinross will be refining, enhancing and improving processes, promoting staff resilience while providing limited additional increased services until the end of March 2024. Our ask is that we continue to invest in the additional seven beds open in T Ward and continue to look at the expansion of our early discharge project. So the ask there is something around 1.1 million non-recurringly to support that. So in conclusion, I think Perth and Kinross's winter plan sets out the P&amp;K HSCP approach to respond strategically and operationally to increase demand for health and social care over the winter period. However, I think the IGB needs to know.
The microphone's off, Evelyn, and we can't hear you online.
Sorry, sorry. So I've just noting for the IGB that the winter is not predictable yet. We don't, you know, we're at the very edges of it just now. So we will have to be prepared to maybe look at more mitigation in the future as we move forward through the winter. So I really don't have anything to say. There is the appendix one, which is the directions, which we can take questions on, or Jackie can take questions on. And yeah, that's, so I'm happy to hand back, Jackie, to yourself or Colin.
Thank you, Mrs Devine. That was a comprehensive run-through of our winter planning. Given that there are specific resource implications, and just before we do take questions, I'd like to pass over to our acting Chief Finance Officer,
I'd like to pass over to our acting chief finance officer, Donna Mitchell, just to address issues around the finances and in particular the reserves.
Thank you. I'm certainly hoping that the paper is quite clear in what the implications are for us in making this decision today. So we've had to balance over the need of supporting our services across the winter with that of our financial position. And those of you that were part of the audit performance committee back in September will be aware that we have a significant unanticipated overspend against our position this year. And our 2% ambition of holding a reserve to help with unanticipated pressures and to help to balance the budget in future years and mitigate against financial risks that are not yet known is going to be severely implicated by not only the unanticipated costs we've already seen, but further with the approval today. So therefore, as noted in section 4.2 of the report, the implication of the approval today, well, that our reserves will be reduced to 0.6%, which is obviously way below our 2% desirable level. And I would just also caveat that that's based on our forecast position, which as you know, is vulnerable to any other changes that we may not yet have built in or be aware of. So it is a difficult position for us financially, but that balance with the need of the services to be maintained over winter time has had to be addressed.
Okay, thank you. Members, I'll now invite any questions on the report before us. If you could indicate in the chat or if there are members online, maybe who have any difficulties with using the chat, I'll offer a space for that in a moment. But we've got a question first of all from councillor Illingworth.
It's actually two questions if I may, but I'm happy to go. First of all, the appendix talks about investment in the seven additional beds and the continuation of the early discharge thing. Is this something we would normally do?
Happy to come back in that. So yes, is the answer. So during winter, we always plan for surge beds across acute and community services. So, but obviously the additionality isn't there to support that this year from a Scottish government perspective.
I suppose in relation to the early discharge project, that is new. That's something that we've put in place to assist with the flow from hospital and reduce delays. So this is a project that's actually providing care packages from people at the point of discharge from hospital very quickly and picking that up very quickly. So it's specifically designed for that. So that is new. So really the direction here is about continuing the contractual arrangements and ongoing commissioning of that service to the end of March.
In previous years, how much has been, what was the contribution, financial contribution from the Scottish government to winter support?
Be roughly around 800, 900,000, I would think.
Yeah, we'd agree it would be in that ballpark, but we could clarify that for you.
Happy with the ballpark figure. That's absolutely fine. Thank you. And we'll go now to Beth Hamilton, please.
Thanks very much. Apologies, I'm not in the room. I had to turn back after Newborough, between Newborough and the garden centre. But anyway, I am joining you here and if I can take advantage, I'll ask David if I can get through from Abernethy later. But anyway, my points and questions. It's really good to see that we're in advance of winter planning. It's become part of the culture. And I think Jackie, your point there about some of the home care stuff already being in place. I think that shows that we're now looking at all round year resilience as well as winter resilience. But the one thing, I mean, I was asked by Sal if I could raise the issue that she had raised about primary care and the role of primary care in the winter resilience planning. I know we had the Tayside board yesterday. We had the Tayside winter planning and there was a thought there from a few of us that was light in primary care. And I'd just like some reassurance. I know I keep putting you in the spot, Hamish, by asking if you feel you've been as involved from a Perth and Kinross and a primary care perspective of being part of this whole winter planning.
Dr Dugall.
Yes, I think so. I think the main, from the perspective of preparing for the winter for primary care, that's done across all 23 practices independently in Perth and Kinross. Probably the main focus of the plan in relation to primary care is in relation to the out of ours. And they have significant challenges, but are looking at how they respond to the increased demand over the winter. And they're very experienced in doing that. So I think it will be a challenging winter, but I think, you know, all areas are being addressed that I can see.
Yeah, that's comforting. Thank you. And the other thing I was just going to say is yesterday at the board, there was a bit of a theme about pharmacy services and the role of community pharmacists. So it was just, I don't, I don't know if that's linking in to the reference in the paper to the community, supporting community groups. But I was just trying to raise the importance of how we support the coordination of volunteers. If that is the community groups that we're referring to, because I know that during other periods, people have been going and picking up people's medicine and pharmacies have been delivering. And so all of these services, it's just to ensure that the voluntary aspect is clear as that is part of the community groups, Evelyn.
I think Mr Ogle, he might be better than Mrs Devine on this one.
Yeah, thank you.
To address the issue of the local volunteers and community groups supporting things like collecting and distributing pharmacy.
I mean, certainly, I'm not sure if Zoe might be a better person. We certainly have coordinators for volunteers to support NHS Health Services and Social Care Services. And we have a range of options, including our volunteer app, which we're implementing. I mean, certainly in terms of wider, yeah, aye, sorry, I'll maybe hand over to Zoe, that's okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. I know, it's okay. I mean, the only direct volunteer service that would collect pharmacy would be RVS. So on discharge from hospital, that can be arranged as part of transportation. The RVS will collect medicines, et cetera. But other than that, we don't have a specific contracted service that will do that as such.
Yeah, it was more that usually, and basically during COVID, for example, a lot of people volunteered to go to the chemist and pick up older people's prescriptions that couldn't get out, et cetera. So I'm just wondering if that's, it's about the communication section that we talked about, working with community groups. And, you know, we reference people, if they couldn't get there, they got the family and it was all sort of, just to make sure there's a bit more than I wish and I hope, and there's a bit more formality around communication with the local community volunteers and who's doing what.
Sorry, could I maybe jump back in again? Just, I mean, obviously we've got our integrated care teams and, you know, when people are working with people and their families, they do obviously make them aware of any community-based resources in the area that might be able to support them. Plus we've got our social prescribers as well, who, you know, have a really good handle on all the various supports and community-based services in their local area. And, you know, they can all work together to make sure that the person taps into as required. But yeah, what we are doing is we are doing further work to try and increase the volunteer pool. And certainly what we would really like is have, you know, pools of carers in each of the sub-localities that integrated care teams can tap into as required. But we're still, that's still a work in progress. And we're still, you know, we're still trying to get the numbers up to make that happen.
Okay, thanks for that then.
Thank you. And maybe just to add as well that we are getting in the immediately following development session, we are getting an item on the social prescribing. But also when we do have the severe adverse weather events, it is the local resilience groups all across Perth and Kinross who will spring into action. So it might not be a routine thing, but certainly in extreme weather events, then they are very well equipped and well, they are very well able and willing to step up. And we'll go now to councillor Frampton, please.
Thank you, convener. My question refers to 2.2, the paragraph where it's to do with the early discharge project. It states in it that, you know, the end of that, one of the paragraphs, this allows us to maintain our strategic direction in relation to providing care at or close to home. I wondered, what does close to home refer to? And if it is referring to GP surgeries, I wonder how this is going to impact on my constituency areas where like the Bridge of Berne doesn't have a GP practice and Methons isn't functioning properly at the moment at all either. And given that this is, you know, with the adverse weather that we've got, this is the third time that these areas have been flooded. And this is only, we're not even into winter yet. So I do wonder, you know, what does it refer to? And how is this going to impact the areas?
Chief Officer.
Thank you very much councillor Frampton. The statement in there really refers to trying to retain people within the communities in which they live. So if, and if they're not able to return to their own home independently, close to home would mean another care provision close to where they live and close to where their friends and family are. So that's really what it's referring to. So if it's not, not specific enough around that, we can, we can look at the terminology.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll come to Mrs Old next, and then we'll go to Mr Black. Sandra Old.
Thank you very much, Chair. So thank you for a comprehensive report being presented with some really laudable aims and objectives within that. We've had, Ian and I have had some feedback from service users regarding some of the points in the report. And really just looking for some clarification, I guess, some assurances around, for example, staffing levels. There is concern out in the community that staffing levels appear on the surface to be dropping rather than increasing and concern about accessing the staff that are there over, over winter in a rural community. In addition to the difficulties often experienced of internet connections and being able to access the staff that are there. And the other, the other question, I suppose, I would like to ask, and apologies, just because of the timelines of circulating information and then getting feedback, I haven't been able to clarify some of the kind of points within this. But perhaps people in the room will have the information that I don't. So Ian and I got some information yesterday of concerns around the discontinuation of a daycare service in Pitlochry provided by Crossreach and which, and apparently the service is being discontinued at the end of this year. So I'm, as I say, my apologies, I'm not familiar with Crossreach and I don't know if that's, if that's social care or if it's third sector. But I wondered if anyone, as I say, in the room has any insight into the discontinuation of the service. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Mrs Robertson.
Yeah, Crossreach is a third sector organisation based in Pitlochry and Bankfoot. And over a period of probably in the region of five years, has had a reducing number of people attending the service and the contract has reduced gradually over a period of years. During COVID, the service shut its doors, shut its doors completely to all service users, unlike other day services around Perth and Kinross, unfortunately. Their manager has notified us that she intends on retiring. And Crossreach have notified us also that they feel that they will struggle to recruit a replacement. There are eight people that currently use the service, one in Bankfoot, which is meant to be a day service. So of course a day service for one person is, you know, it's, the two things are not really conducive to each other. So we have been in discussions with them about a redesign of the service and implementing an Arts for Dementia Project instead of what is the day service at the moment that hasn't been able to increase its numbers of people attending. We've been working with the provider, completed an equality impact assessment. And social work teams are now liaising with all the families to look at alternatives, both within Pitlochry, but also for the one person who uses the service within Bankfoot as an alternative. And we've given that commitment that we wouldn't close the service unless we knew that everybody who attends it at this point in time has an alternative in place. The original discussion around that was with regards, looking at expanding other third sector organisations that were able to increase football and provide a more dementia-specific service within the rural localities.
Thank you very much for that, Zoe. That's really helpful. I guess, you know, the other aspects, as we're aware, is not just for the people that attend the service, but also the respite gained by their carers. So I'm assuming from, well, hopeful from what you've said, that their needs will also be being taken into account here as well.
Yeah, absolutely, Sandra. Yeah. And the modelling that we're keen to explore is a community connections type model, which will provide alternative methods of respite less traditional, but potentially and hopefully more impactful in terms of that respite opportunity.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Thank you very much.
Mr Black.
Thanks, Chair. Just for clarification, surge beds are to facilitate the discharge. I'm trying to understand that because we've got 50 plus in Tay ward surge beds and then we've got the number seven further down. And I'm just clarifying for that. That's the first point. And the second point I have is in the four by fours, are they going to be centrally a service or is it going to be areas? Because you may hear one area where it's all happening and two areas where it's quite happy. And if there are no other questions, I'd like to come back with that question.
Mrs Devine.
So your first question about surge beds is an additional seven beds in Tay ward. So that, and the reason for surge beds is to maintain the capacity and flow throughout the PRI hospital. So you'll have the acute wards in PRI, which we try to maintain a very low level of delay. Tay ward is really like a Perth City step down ward almost. So it's, it's really focuses more on people from Perth City to support them. Because we have our community hospitals in the rural areas that support from a community local perspective. So that's, it's really just that whole system capacity and flow that that supports. Oh, and relation to the vehicles, we would, most years, we do look to have four by fours in each of the sort of sub-localities so that we've got them dotted about. But if we had to move because one area was under threat and the other area wasn't, obviously we would move the vehicles around. Yeah.
Thank you. And we'll go to Bob Benson next, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. And also Chair, thank you very much for your kind words at the beginning of the meeting. I'd like to look at the, more of the financial side of things, in particular the cost benefits that emerge from this further investment that we're making to deliver the kind of services that we want to see in Perth and Kinross. I think it would be important throughout this exercise and at the end of this winter plan is that we have some indication of the cost benefits of taking people out of acute hospital provision and through delayed discharge by maintaining people within the community. I think it's important that we continue to evidence the benefits and value of what the Health and Social Care Partnership is doing and how the IGB is performing to ensure that happens. So that's, that's my first question. I'll come back for a second one, but if perhaps you could address that one first, please.
Chief Officer.
Thank you very much, Bob. I hope you saw online that there was a number of us in the room agreeing with your comments, being very clear about what does this mean in terms of the health and wellbeing impacts and outcomes for people? And ensuring that they are, if they are enabled to remain at home and cared for and treated at home without going into hospital, that's something that we've indicated that we need to have a strong evaluation of the impact of the hospital at home service, for example, but also ensuring that people can return home much more quickly without all of the, I don't want to use the word disabling, but all the kind of deterioration that can come from lengthy stays in hospital. So we need to somehow evaluate that as you're suggesting and be very clear about what this means for people's long-term health and wellbeing outcomes. I don't, and I think we're just saying we would agree with that. And we'll begin to think about how we would do that and bring it back in due course to the IGB.
Thanks very much. I think it's really important that we evidence the value of what we do, particularly as we're heading towards a kind of unsustainability of our budget position. And we need to evidence exactly why it's important that we continue to invest in the work of our health and social care partnerships, if not increase our budgets. So that was one of my main questions. The second question, if I may, Chair, is roundabout, it's clear in the direction of what the, where the extra costs are coming from. In terms of unanticipated costs that again are, will likely be impacted because we are maintaining more people at home, what kind of impact would that have on our core costs? And I'm thinking from prescribing to whatever. And I wondered if we've got any sight on what these potential unanticipated costs could be or the areas where they're most likely to arise is probably best at this time. unanticipated costs could be, or the areas where they're most likely to arise is probably best at this time.
Mrs Mitchell.
Thank you, Bob. And I thi- I think the first thing to note is that they're not unanticipated or consequences of this. This is what we're actually living in just now. We're seeing because we have more people maintained at home for longer and it's a greater number, we're, we're seeing that ripple effect. And we're about to come on to a prescribing discussion next, where we will be able to evidence that as well. And in regards to your first point, the decisions that we're going into for our budget setting will very much need to be evidence based. Because there will be difficult decisions that we'll, we'll have to make in order to maintain that strategic direction of keeping people at home for longer. But you're, the, the impact is already being seen. And and you're right, it's from prescribing right, right through the whole, the whole pathway of where our costs are captured. So I think we're already seeing it. This will just be a, a, a further, in addition to the, the challenge of maintaining that people at home for longer. And the challenge that we also have is that when we're identifying that, there, there, no doubt about it, is it a cost benefit to keep people at home rather than have them being delayed in a hospital bed? The shift of that resource is very difficult, as we're all aware. And we're struggling to find additional resource, financial resource and workforce resource to maintain that shift.
Yeah, indeed. And that would also apply to other forms of institutionalised care as well, and not necessarily just hospital care. So there's something about how we evidence this model as a way of being, working ahead and thinking beyond it as more than just a winter plan. And there have been suggestions that perhaps winter plan is only one part of it. So I welcome that and I welcome the assurance that you've provided within that. Thank you.
Chief Officer.
Thank you very much, Bob, and and thank you for encouraging us to think beyond winter. But also think about the, the ongoing challenges of our population and the demographics there. And I'm thinking of the report that was received by NHS T side board yesterday from Dr Fletcher, our annual public health plan. And there's some key metrics in that I think would be helpful to, to bring into the, the, the discussion that we need to have in, in terms of predicting future need and demands on, on health and social care in Perth and Kinross and what that means for us. Because if you look at the graph that's on two point four, we're right in the middle of that. So we're experiencing it now and there's, there's more to come. So we, we need to be actually factoring, what does that, what does that mean for us and and beginning to project what that, what the future requirement is, not only in terms of how can we change what we're doing, but also what's the additionality that we require to be able to serve the needs of our population.
Thank you. And I'd also refer to yesterday's anchor strategy as well, which is implications for housing, for example, which features in this paper too. So there are, there are, there's a, there are other wider, wider contexts that's beyond population health. But it's also about how do we plan for the kind of future services and provision and the kind of residence that people will require in future. So it's part of that bigger thinking. And so I do welcome that discussion. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. I've got, I think, four more requests for questions. I'm conscious that we are pushing up against our 11 o'clock scheduled start for the development session. So can we keep these short and snappy? I'll go to Dave Henderson next, please.
Thank you. I'll make it short and snappy. Just about interim placements. Could you explain or respond on the rationale behind bringing it in house? And also, you know, given the partnership work with independent care home sector interim placements over the last couple of years and helping to keep the delay discharge down. Is there any intention to officially communicate this change of policy to them? Because it may have an impact on their occupancy. And also if there is a communication, it might be an opportunity to recognise the importance of their work over the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I think it's, I think it's important for the IGB to recognise that the increase and the change in the way interim placements were arranged was as a result of some of the winter pressures last year and its Scottish government guidance and encouragement to expand that and also to fund it in a different way. And we embrace that. So I suppose what we're saying is that there, there is no longer funding to do that. So we're reverting back to, to the position that we were in previously. So it might feel like it's a change in policy, but it's not. It's a reverting back to where we were. And and the question around why would we be using our in-house care home facilities for that is that's because we've identified that there is some capacity there and it comes at no cost to the, the, the Health and Social Care Partnership to be able to provide that.
Okay, thank you. Maureen Summers, please, next.
Yes, it's just about an individual case I know of, and I just wondered if it was maybe age related. The winter plan seems to focus mostly on care of the elderly during winter. And this lady in particular is still in her 40s and she's been bed blocking for months now, months. And I think it's because she's had a stroke, she's got complex needs. And, you know, I just wondered if the, the age factor was behind it, you know, if there's not a suitable place for people that age to go to.
Yeah, I, I mean, the residential care homes are not set up for people of that, that age, certainly, Maureen, yes. So that, that would be an issue in a very small number of cases. They'd need to change their registration in order to accommodate. But also there's that kind of question about the suitability of an older people's care home for somebody in their 40s. So we have had that discussion and what we're looking at strategically moving forward for that very small number of cases, but a relevant number of cases where people have had, for example, a stroke or something along those lines that's left them with lifelong debilitating conditions. So we are aware of that. And we do have some alternatives, but they're not ideal at this point in time. It would need to be, it would be preferable that it be a home based type service as opposed to a care home or institutionalised type environment.
She may well be bed blocking for a few more months then, because of the lack of accommodation.
Probably be quite good to discuss it out with and then we could have a look at the individual case because I'm not familiar with it, if that's okay.
Thank you. I'm going to come to Serene McCartney next. Serene, if you're there. It would be star six on your phone, Serene, if you have a question.
Hey, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, thanks. First of all, apologies for the dogs, purely trained. The, I've got a range of questions, but because of the time and I would, I would rather put those in writing to the Chair and the Chief Officer. The small points of, of issues, if that was helpful for that, I would do that. It's the issue of early, early discharge. Locked on. I've locked myself in now. About the issue of intermediate care. Is it possible somebody will explain to me whether I've got this wrong or not? But it would seem that intermediate care is downgraded a bit here. And my worry is that as a consequence of that, we could end up in a situation where people who can't, are about or could go home with care but not quite ready to do so could actually be placed in intermediate care. And I'm wondering with the new, the policy that's been announced, which I agree with, by the way, whether or not we've got a position now where we're running the risk of having a breakdown of care for someone who has left hospital, but the home, the home situation isn't quite that needs to be.
Mrs Devine.
So in the definition of intermediate care is, is a sort of step down facility. So in Perth and Kinross, you know, we do use our community hospitals for an intermediate care approach. And that's somebody who is needing to go home but needs a bit more rehabilitation and support. So within, within Perth and Kinross, we're fairly well placed to provide that sort of care. Over and above that, the conversation we had earlier about T Ward, it does provide an additional level of rehabilitation for people in Perth City who are just not quite ready to go home, but that, but we will provide an additionality there as well. So we've also got our daycare facilities that will support people who've gone home that need additional support and maybe carers need some respite. So, yeah, I think we're reasonably well placed for intermediate care in Perth and Kinross.
Thank you. And do you know what we're doing with Pitlochry Community Hospital?
In respect of?
Respect of the plan, the winter plan, we've I told you that I think the, it's the only village hospital or community hospital, sorry. It isn't mentioned in the plan that I can see.
So Pitlochry Community Hospital, Ian, is, is open and functioning and will remain the same throughout winter, if that's what you're meaning?
No, I don't mean it's closure. I was wanting to clarify, having named the other premises. As that means that Pitlochry gets no, and being looked to have additional roles in the plan and will continue as it is.
I think it will, will continue as it is for the winter, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Serene. Thanks, Serene. And Chief Officer and I will be happy to pick up any other questions you have in writing. So I think we're down to two additional questions and then I'm going to wrap it up. Councillor Lingworth, and then I'll come to Mr Black.
Right, two, two very quick questions. First of all, I think everybody should be nervous about the impact financially. And I wonder if we should be considering upping the risk for financial to red again.
Donna.
Yeah, entirely agree. And for the next time that's brought to the agenda of either the IGB or the Audit and Performance Committee, that will be my advice.
And the second question is again around finances. We're currently paying quite a lot of money for two C cover that we just don't use in, in Perth and Kinross. Is there anything that can be done to, to remove that issue?
Chief Officer.
Thank you very much. I think it's a very pertinent question and it's something that we are considering very closely as a management team and would like to discuss with the IGB in, in future development sessions around the budget. Two C practices and the, the additional cost for that is, is one, is one area. There are others that I think that in terms of the financial risk sharing for the IGBs that we seriously need to, to reconsider. And I think now's the time to do that. So thank you for raising that.
And last question, Mr Black.
Thanks, Chair. And it's really the, the question is, how adaptable is the plan? I know we planned for the worst case scenario, but how, what happens if we have a mild winter? What happens if we have a good winter? How adaptable is the plan to, to, to focus on the, the shortages that we have at the moment and the pressures we have at the moment? How often is it reviewed to take that on board?
Mrs Devine.
So we have an implementation plan that goes with the winter plan. So we will be working at, working on timescales and reviewing it. We have a short life working group of, of our staff, which is sort of focused around winter and that plan with the milestones, the timescales will all be reviewed on a regular basis.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to formally move the Perth and Kinross Health and Social Care Partnership Winter Plan for 2324. I'll just quickly run through the recommendations that we note the ongoing capacity and flow pressures in health and social care in Perth and Kinross, which are likely to increase in the lead up to and during winter. That we approve the plan, that we note that a T side winter plan is being developed in collaboration across the fee health and social care partnerships and NHS T side acute services. And that will come to the November meeting of this board for noting that we approved the additional spend to support our whole system resilience over the winter period through surge beds in T Ward and the expansion and extension of the early discharge project to March 24. And that we therefore issue the direction as set out in section six and appendix one to this report. Do we have any comments? No. Can we agree the report? Agreed. Thank you very much. Last very brief item on the agenda is our future meeting dates. Can we agree those future meeting dates and note that we should have a couple of additional IGB development sessions, particularly to do with the budget slotted in there. I think those dates have been previously emailed round. So we will reconfirm it because we've missed them off the, the agenda here. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. Thank you for your attendance. The meeting is called to a close now and we will take a short break to allow people to move around and re-seed themselves before the development session, which will commence shortly.